Couple of minutes after we planned, but that's okay. Moving on to River House now, aren't we?
Yes, I'm sorry. This is just a housekeeping matter. This was brought up, let's see, on July 17th. There were, excuse me, but there were only three of us to vote, so it had to be unanimous, and it was not. And this, by the way, has to do with River House and the brewery, and we know, of course, that that interested party has withdrawn, but however, the instruction to the city manager stands unless we vote to remove it, because we voted to put it into place, just like the, we didn't vote to declare the property that we discussed earlier surplus. It wasn't our council, but it stands, so anything any council does stands until you remove it. So I want to be sure that we remove this. So I'll just, I'm just reading this for you, that's all. I'm not making a motion right now, because I know we need to take public comment, but just for your information, this, and I'm reading from the minutes of the July 17th meeting, where there were three of us present, which was Councilman Zidane, Councilman Young, and myself, and this is on page 35 of those minutes. Councilwoman Moss made a motion that the city council instructs the city manager to cease discussions with any and all parties regarding a brewery or any other business at River House, and not to pursue commercialization of this city-owned property. Colonel Young seconded the motion, excuse me, and it failed two to one with Dr. Zidane's voting no, Councilwoman Moss yes, and Mayor Protam Young, yes. So again, that's from the minutes of July 17th, so I was putting it on the agenda merely as a matter of housekeeping. I want to make that motion again, so that we remove the instruction to the city manager. And we would have to take a public comment first.
Public comment? Wayne, that's accurate, right?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Okay, so I make a motion that the city council instructs the city manager to cease discussions with any and all parties regarding a brewery or any other business at River House, and not to pursue commercialization of this city-owned property.
So you're saying you don't want them to rent it out anymore, to anyone who wants to have a party there, or wedding, or things like that?
No, we just maintain its current use.
So what do you, would you define "commercialization"?
Commercialization would have to do with any business that is not currently there, and that's, the city is-
I'm not sure if that's what that means.
An outside business, all right? River House is owned by the city, and the city rents it out.
I think this is just a waste of time, and kind of silly, because we've already, the discussions we had with one specific person, and they're already over. So it's almost like you want to grandstand and make a point about this, you want to bring up the River House for like the 17th time.
Well, it's not silly, quotes, and I'm not grandstanding quotes, because when we pass something, it stands until it's removed. And we just saw that with the surplus property. You know, as I stated, this council didn't vote on that, but it stands until a council, any other council removes it.
Okay.
So it's a housekeeping matter, that's what I said. I'm not grandstanding, I said it was housekeeping.
The wording about the commercialization is not, and I don't even understand what that means, so outside organization, so Rotary Club can't rent it, we're an outside organization, I mean, I think-
That the city controls it. The city rents it, not an outside, and that's what I mean by "commercialization," I'm defining it for you.
Okay, I think it's poorly defined, and I don't really understand what it means, and it probably is going to mess something up. I think, I think the whole issue is moot, because the conversation has already ended. All we did was ask the city manager to explore it, the city manager explored it, reported back that there's no longer any interest, the matter's over.
It's not moot, it stands until we vote to remove it.
Mr. Comett, is the matter over, and that it's a dead issue at this point, or is this something that we need to actually take a vote on?
Well, well, that particular party that was interested, that apparently is over, but if a council member wants to make a motion, they certainly can, to make it clear that the city manager isn't to keep pursuing-
I think, you know, just for clarity, and not, I mean, and I appreciate what Dr. Zidane says, that, you know, the specific wording may be improved upon, to define that the city manager is not to explore external uses of the, of the River House.
The city manager was never tasked with exploring external uses. The city manager was, was asked to speak to a specific person about their interests, which they have done, and it's-
Was that your understanding?
That's what it said.
Maybe if we just say that, and Vice Mayor mentioned this, maybe if we just say that he no longer is, needs to explore concessions on the property? I don't understand.
That's fine with me.
Kind of spitballing there.
He was never tasked with exploring concessions.
If that's acceptable to everyone, then I will add that to it. So then it would, then it would be a motion that city council instructs the city manager to cease discussions with any and all parties regarding a brewery, and, I'm sorry, what's the other language you want? Or other concessions? Is that, is that the language that's preferred by council? That's fine with me, then.
Okay, and I second that.
Okay, well, yes, sir, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, hearing done, motion carried.
Major Victor.
Let's see here. Resolutions.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Vero Beach, Florida, granting to Ride With Cole LLC, a concession license for operating a bike rental service, providing for an effective date.
As council knows, this was something that's brought to you a couple of months ago, and we will give locations around, for example, Riverside Park, and some of those other places that we'd give license to operate out of.
All right.
We need to open it up.
Council discussion?
No.
I have none, we've discussed this.
Public comment?
Okay.
Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
We need a motion.
Motion, I make a motion to-
I'll second it, approve.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seitz?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes. Public hearings, public notice items for future public hearings.
Okay, this ordinance will be heard as a public hearing on September 18th at 5:30 PM. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, related to the City of Vero Beach Police Officers Retirement Fund, amending section 58-108, credited service in chapter 58, personnel in retirement, of the Code of the City of Vero Beach, by amending the procedures for purchasing credited service, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Okay. City clerk matters, just wanted to announce the openings that we have on some of our boards. On the code enforcement board, we have two alternate positions open. On the fire pension board, we have one full position open, and on the historic preservation commission, we have one alternate position open.
Okay. From the city manager's report, if you want to, we'll talk about Dodgerstown again.
Oh, yeah. That's great. Yeah.
Just to make sure you're still awake, you know?
No, I'm just going to ask Holt to roll the tape.
So we'll move on to council matters. I had a few, but I think I can, I can wait until next meeting, except for one. There was an article in the Press Journal, just a few days back, written by Larry Reisman, and it insinuated that some of us, if not all of us, were going to, again, something about height limits, and not restricting height limits, and lining our pockets, and all kinds of accusations. So I just wanted to send a message to Larry Reisman, because I know he watches these meetings. When he's no longer acting as a political activist at the Press Journal, I have a suggestion. He can start a blog called Reisman's Pieces, and that's the only message I have for-
That was cute.
Thanks. I thought it would work well for me.
Are we up?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to, I don't know what the mechanism here is, but, you know, we discussed the optional paid parking for businesses. I don't know whether I'd ask Jim or Wayne to draft something up that we can share with the public, to say, here are the options. I don't know whether we need an approved vendors list. I would think that we'd want some sort of continuity. If business A is six businesses down, we don't want to have two different parking systems, there should be some continuity there. So I'd like to put a little bit more thought into how we would offer that to a business owner.
Is it, and Jim, you know better, I mean, is it something that OBA might be better to shepherd for all their members, or?
Actually-
I mean, because obviously, some parking system company's going to want quantity.
I think that we should seriously, I mean, this is something that we need to talk about, and this is one of these things where, if we make a decision like this, it's going to make people angry if we do it, but I think we do it all or nothing. It's really Ocean Drive and Cardinal, or, or nothing at all.
I'm truly not opposed to that. I would be fully in support of that, but with the one caveat of, and I don't know what the expense involved here, you know, if you're a city resident, you would get some sort of parking pass that would exempt you from needing to pay for parking.
Now, when you start making exceptions, and we've met with half a dozen of these companies, their revenue stream comes when you put the credit card into that, and you make exceptions, and you say, okay, city residents don't have to pay, you have two problems there. One is certifying somebody as a city resident, because, for example, at our recreational facilities, that's my aunt, and happens to live within the corporate limits, and so they start using that address to become a member. The second thing is, is there's, it's a very difficult way of determining how much revenue you're going to lose, if a city resident can come there and park all day, or whatever the timeframe would be. And so these vendors to pay for the system. Now, if we want to absorb the cost of the system, then we can write any rule we want to. My thinking was, and I think I've mentioned to a couple of you guys, that it's like the picture of, we had parking meters on the island at one time, and somewhere along the line, we decided not to have parking meters. We probably sometime in the future that, decided to put the parking meters back, and then we take them back out. It's like the two hours or three hour signs. When you spend several thousand dollars for a parking system, and then you start getting complaints, and next month, you say, city manager, take those, that parking system out, that costs a lot of money. Where if you go into a contract with a vendor, and you like his system, and you're guaranteeing-
Or hers.
Or hers.
Yeah.
And you say, A, we're going to give exceptions to some people to park there, then you're going to be guaranteeing them revenue stream, or B, you say, you have added, you've got Cardinal and Ocean Drive, you put in the parking systems that are going to work, but it's going to be enforced for them to make the revenue stream. And, and if you sign a contract that says, okay, it's up to you to operate and maintain, then we're less likely to be able to make a decision to pull them out.
I mean, I hear your arguments very clearly. Do you think there's some sort of solution? I mean, I know, you know, Palm Beach has dealt with this, there, it's parking permit, parking, you know, and maybe you exclude it to property owners, I don't know, but there's certainly some sort of compromise here, as to how we can, again, we're not going to make everyone happy, but I know I've talked to so many business owners, and most of them, with the exception of Mulligans, would love to see Sexton Plaza be paid parking. You know, I don't know if we each mail this thing, or do, you know, all of them, but I'm not done talking about parking, basically.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I wasn't saying that to you. I would like to continue this parking discussion as we move into season here, because we still haven't put any action items on. The only thing we've done is found an additional six spaces, which is great, and then we've found an additional seven, that Monty got on Azalea, so.
And we have the potential for more spaces, but I think that, I want to come back with an idea. I'm not, like, going to be set in any of my ideas, but I'm just, want to come back with an idea of a few things we do simultaneously. And I think that it, just in my mind, okay, so what if, what if you're an employee who lives somewhere else in the city of Vero Beach, but you're a Vero Beach resident, and you're working at the hotel? I mean, it's like, there may be some unintended consequences, that it doesn't really solve the problem. Whereas if you put in the shuttle, that's going back to those overflow parking lots on a regular basis, use some of the money that you generate from a parking system when it's, everyone's on the parking system, then I think, now you're talking about a combination of, of a couple things that really prevents people from, you totally prevent the going out and wiping the chalk off and moving your car to another seat, if, if everyone who chooses to park on that street is on the parking meters. And everyone who doesn't want to pay, has to go to one of the two beaches and take the shuttle back and forth.
Well, the other way, the thing of doing, and Boca Raton did this for Spanish River Park, you sell a pass to the residents, and they put a sticker in their front windshield of their car, and they get free access, but it costs them like 50 bucks to buy that. But for the full year, they get access to Spanish River Park. Same thing could be here. Then you could say to a vendor, well, you get to capture that revenue as part of your operation, and then that sort of offsets some of the costs. But that way, you guarantee that, you know, there, you'd have time to make sure that they're city residents, and they would be buying the pass.
And I, and I think any, any number of these solutions could, could be one of those, they could all play into solving some of these, to leave any of the issues, but, you know, I still think we need to, I'd like to have Wayne look at, you know, can we legally require that hotel employees, or the hotels themselves furnish the city with license plates of, I mean, can we, I want to know what we can do. Can we restrict employee parking on Ocean Drive altogether?
Fertile ground might be that you require employers to provide parking for their employees.
But we can't do that retroactively now, can we?
Something we just have to look at.
All right, well, I mean, I'm not an attorney, so I'm looking at you.
Because that's one of the problems, why you have parking problems. For many years, businesses weren't required to provide their own parking in the Ocean Drive area, just like downtown.
Do we currently have a moratorium on shared parking at this point? We do, right?
No.
On new development without onsite parking?
We did not do that. What we did is that we made more, they have to build more parking spaces per square foot than they did before.
And we're not giving credit for street parking.
Well, remember what shared parking is. In the way it's designed, and the shared parking agreements that come into planning and zoning get approved, therefore using, say, a parking lot at different times of the day. Of course, it's up to those two different property owners to, to basically police that.
Okay, well, here, let me just finish real quick. There were, there were some good ideas that came out of tonight. One, let's see if we can monitor license plates of employees and restrict parking. Two, let's see if we could talk to some of these businesses, like, you know, what is it, Merrill Lynch or Morgan Stanley right there, and see if we can actually put together an agreement for some parking in those spaces, whether that's shared or otherwise.
Yeah, you're talking a shared parking agreement, that really should be between businesses.
And that's fine, but, you know, how do we facilitate that conversation? One of the council members goes and talks to Costa Day Estee and that business, and says, here, let's put something together.
Obviously, some businesses don't want their property to be used by people that are, you know, when they're not open, some even block it off, because they don't want the liability.
And I don't disagree with that, but there, there ways around that, right?
Sure.
Paying for it, or, you know, release of liability.
Sure, the other person can be required to obtain, you know, insurance to cover.
I think that the Vero Beach Hotel spot does have a parking agreement with Merrill Lynch across the street, because they, I see him shuffling cars over there all the time.
They do valet parking.
And so they, so I think they have those agreements. I think Bobby has an agreement. But, for example, Caesar, in his shopping area there, it was actually his landlord that gave parking agreements to a newer tenant. And so, that's, that was a business decision that he made, as to how he arrived at his parking arrangements in the back of his. But I'm not sure how, to facilitate that is more of a discussion, and we've tried. For example, we've made many, many contacts on the parking garage that's in Central Beach, and it just, there's no way to make it work. That was going to be the real key to having the valet parking work.
Yeah.
And obviously, they could not cut a deal.
Just real quick, what's, what's wrong with charging everybody equally to park downtown? And the reason I say that is because if, if you're an employee, I don't know how it'd be structured, but let's just say you pay a dollar an hour, and let's just, for example, say you allow up to eight hours, which would be a shift, and so if that employee wants to park for eight hours in that spot, they're going to pay eight dollars a day, working five days a week, at 40 dollars a week, and that would deter them, I would think, from parking there, and rather use one of these offsite parking areas. And then the employer wouldn't have to enforce it, they would want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, and you put, you, at the same time, you have to have the shuttle that runs, that's part of the expenses, you have to make it so that someone can relatively easily park their car in the all-day lots, all-day free lots, which would be the overflow, where we do have parking, that's not that far away. I'll have to get in my car and see how long it takes to do that drive. You may, you may want to just do, just one of those two, just do one end, that way it'll actually cut time off the round trip. May just like go to South Beach, and, or, or the other end, and go back and forth with a golf cart, golf cart shuttle, and you have someone who's make, you know, I don't know what you pay them, 15 dollars an hour to drive the golf cart shuttle back and forth.
How about, how about we do this, because it's getting late here? Let's, I'd like to put it on the agenda for, for next council meeting, let's each individually take one aspect here, like, you could be the shuttle, like, let's figure out how to make it work.
Yeah.
You know, I'll take the, I'll work with these guys to look at meter parking, and whether or not we can restrict license plates, and let's bring all our ideas to the table, and just figure out how we can implement the best idea, or a multitude of those ideas.
And I would just say, I, I like the idea they had with the, the parking passes, but the problem is that prevents, so if an employee gets a year pass for 50 dollars, and they put the sticker in there, they're going to do that, and park all day long, and it doesn't really solve the problem. Whereas if they're paying as you go, there's, that's an incentive enough, and if they feel that it's a day like, you know what, I don't feel like riding the shuttle, they're allowed to do what they like.
Sure.
I, I think that it really, if you have, especially if you have it all of Ocean and Cardinal, but you have some offsite, it's going to give them the proper incentive to want to use it, I think.
Well, then, I mean, you're going to have to deal, deal away with, there's an all-day parking lot on Bogomia, that's filled up at 7:00 AM.
That's what I'm saying.
It's all-day parking.
Oh, yeah, all of those.
So that's-
Bogomia, Ocean, Cardinal, all the side streets, and Ocean and Cardinal, all of them will be kiosks.
All the stuff by Hummuson Park would all be gone.
Well, it'll be kiosks.
As far as, if I understand correctly, we took some of the park to make those parking spaces up by Citrus Grill, right? Isn't that right?
Up by Citrus, yeah, Citrus Grill, we have a grant there, but, and then we also have, what's that restaurant, not restaurant, the hotel that's on Ocean Drive that-
Islander?
Uh-huh. They have four or five spaces there, that we could, but at the Hummuson Park, I think there's only like five spaces that are really restricted under that grant.
Okay, so everything else will be on the table?
I think if you want to make it work, if you want, you have to do it that way.
Yeah.
Because if you leave, if you leave all-day free parking, which they currently have at, at the south end of Hummuson Park, at the, the seasonal farmer's market area, and, and the side street you're saying, then you're, it's not going to work, because then they're just, they're going to immediately go to those lots.
Yeah, I, I mean, I feel like I have a pretty good idea where, where you guys are on this. I would definitely suggest, let's all bring back something to the table for next meeting, see if we can do some action items, which reminds me, I got a letter from a constituent that you guys should have a copy of. I'm not suggesting one way or another, but it, it's literally on the table. This is Barbara Thompson, who's the owner of the Magic Market Parking Lot, said make me an offer. Now, we already own property there, which would be my first choice, but, anyway, I wanted you guys to be aware of that.
Thank you. I think we all got copies of that.
Yep.
She'd be a tough negotiator.
Yeah.
At best.
Okay, are you, were those your messages?
Yes, I'm finished, thank you.
Let me throw something out there, and, and I realize it's 10:31, but, you know, the other aspect to this is, you know, the customers having a shuttle available for them to use, because we're just focusing on the employees right now. I mean, is that just totally not acceptable by the community as we've seen it? Because, you know, in certain areas, you know, there is a, just a steady stream of, you know, you know, a four-person, you know, golf cart that runs up and down, so-
I think it's a great idea.
I think it would be for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
You might actually have, you might even, anyone who doesn't want to pay for parking, they have the option of using the free lots, and then they don't have to, so people really are opposed to this idea of paying for parking.
Stuart, Stuart does that.
Yeah, Stuart, that's where I got the idea from.
And, and, okay, so, so that was one thing in my brain, and the other thing that was in my brain was, is it, Wayne, is it permissible for us to, to require the businesses' employees to have a decal fixed to their automobile? Because if we can identify, clearly identify without, you know, any problem, who's an employee, then it becomes a incentive for them not to, that's not a good thing.
I think it's like the license tags, I'm kind of doubtful, but it's-
I think the license-
One of those questions along with it.
-would be the only way to go, so you could take the sticker off, you'd have to know the license plate, and they're not going to take that off every night.
Okay, I got it, all right, very good.
Maybe.
Okay.
I, I agree.
Councilwoman Moss?
Okay, I'll invite everyone to Town Hall, which will be this Friday at 5:00 PM, at the Vero Beach Chamber of Commerce, which is located in the Masonic Lodge, which is at the corner of 14th Avenue and Route 60. It's a nonpartisan event, it's privately sponsored, and I guess I'm going to plead with everyone to please carpool, because heaven help us, we don't want a parking problem, so please be aware of that. Carpool, please. I want, I'd like to, to recognize Holt Sutherland, he's, he's such a talented, he, by the way, is taking care of all our audio visual right now. He's, he's the captain in command, and he's, he's also, and I didn't know him until recently, a very talented musician. He's a member of the Bobby Owen Band, and I had the opportunity to hear him play twice, I think in the last few weeks. And he's, he's so talented, and I never knew that he was a musician, but at any rate, this is just his day job, or, you know, it used to be his day job, now I guess he's got two night jobs, but, thank you, Holt. And finally, the lifeguards had a very successful beach ball, in spite of the weather. The race to the rec was canceled, on account of weather, that was last Sunday of Labor Day weekend, September 2nd. But the ball was very successful, a lot of people, and they're to support them, and I want to commend them, and anyone who wants to make a contribution at any time can go to their website, vbla, vero beach lifeguard association dot org. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Young.
Okay, um, where are we? Okay, thanks to Karen Holmes for meeting with the Centennial Planning. The Ocean Side Business Association will be an important part of our celebrations, and she came and sat down with us, and I think between the music, the concerts on the beachside, and a multitude of other areas, that'll be something that reflects where we want to go on the beach. Also, Mark is gone, but he hosted our August meeting, and we had probably, I don't know, 30 people out there, and it was a good opportunity, and at that time, the N M River County Chamber came, and so thank you to Dory for being there, and she also said that she would fully support our effort to highlight the 100 years for the, for the city. And also, our own airport manager, Eric, was there, and the Aviation Heritage Day that he'll be hosting out there is going gangbusters, and I appreciate the hard work for that. The 17th of September, our good friends at county will be doing a proclamation in honoring our centennial, so everybody's invited to that. On the 21st of September, and I'm going quickly, and I apologize for, you know, just blowing through all this, but the 21st of September is the National POW MIA Day. It's on a Friday at 9 o'clock, and I realize that's a business day, and most people won't be available, but if you're in the area on 9 o'clock, going out to Memorial Island, I think that'll be a special, a special occasion. There's been some discussion as of late in regards to AW Young Park, and activities there. Thank you to the police, thank you to the city manager for addressing that, just, you know, staying attuned to that is important, and I think it's a, you know, an area that we need to make sure that we attend to, and it's being done. being done. Also, on the 9th of October at 5:00 PM, that's a big important day for everybody. In Tallahassee will be the public comment for the PSC action. Unfortunately, the 9th of October is a meeting here in the city chambers. For everybody that's still watching, I think everybody here at the dais has lent their full weight behind, hoping that the PSC will show their resolve and, and allowing this to move forward. And then finally, on the 6th of November, that's an auspicious day. It's a night meeting here and I would ask the council to entertain a day meeting so that we can have the ability to, to cover the election results in the evening. I think there's a conflict-
That would be November, that, November, yeah.
Okay. So, I don't know if you're-
I definitely would not want to do a daytime meeting on a Tuesday. I couldn't be here if we did.
Yeah. The problem that we have is we televise the election results as they come in. I mean, we could start the meeting at three and as long as we're out of here by five, it gives Holt enough time to set up and be ready to-
Since when have we been out of here by five on a three o'clock meeting?
I know. Or we change the day, you know?
So, yeah, I mean, yeah, three o'clock, well, it depends what you mean by daytime meeting, I guess. Three o'clock, I, I could, I could probably, knowing it far enough ahead of time, I could arrange that. Especially if our agenda was limited that we had to be out of here by five o'clock. That sounds really good to me.
Well, it certainly could be after election, though that means it could only be one item.
I mean, it could, you know? I mean, you could change your whole day that you have the meeting to a different day.
Move it to Friday? When's it, when are you off?
Not until the Monday afterwards.
Well, so, yeah, well, the other option, yeah, I guess you could do, I mean, you could do a different day at five o'clock, Wednesday or, or Thursday, either one. I'm fine with that. It just, I can't do too early on a, oh, no, I can't, yeah. But you want to watch the election? I think, I like this idea of three o'clock with a five o'clock limit. That's not like the best meeting ever. Let's do that.
Let's do it.
At 10:38 at night, I think there's unanimity on that. All right. Thank you.